First of all, I'd say thank you. I had a concussion. I had a fall out here a few weeks back, and I just want to say thanks to all the people who helped me out. And tonight, I'm going to let Mark, who is Vice Mayor, go ahead and run the meeting, and I'm here to vote and pay attention to what's going on. So I just want to let you know what's going on with me, and I'm going to physical therapy, so, and that works for me. With that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Well, obviously, we're glad to have you back tonight.
Thanks.
A lot of people in the community ask about you, so it's good to have you. Roll call, please.
Danielle Mackenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Lynn Lewis?
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I just sit where Adam's sitting?
You can sit here.
You can have this chair.
No, 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 that might be my chair. Okay, our consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held December 21st, 2020. Receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held November 10th, 2020. Approve a new job description for Marketing Communications Manager in Public Affairs Department and approve placement in pay grade 117 of the city's salary table. Item D, approve a new job description for Aquatic Center Intendant for the Parks and Recreation Department, which will combine the duties of Deck Intendant and Aquatics Cacheter to provide better shift coverage during the summer aquatic season, and approve placement in pay grade 101 of the city's salary table. Item E, approve revised job description for Senior Building Inspector in the Community Development Department and approve placement in pay grade 110 of the city's salary table. Item F, accept a placement, or accept a permanent roadway easement and utility easement from Terrell M. Cavaner and Rhonda J. Cavaner, trustees of the Cavaner Family Revocable Trust, dated October 21st, 2013, parcels 13 and 13.1, and relocate a sign and mailbox for construction and maintenance of the Southeast 4th Street Railroad Underpass Project. Item G, accept two 10-foot temporary workspace easements and two 17 permanent roadway and utility easements from Warren Fishburne for construction and maintenance of the Southeast Sewer Force Main Improvements along North Side of Indian Hills. Item H, approve a tenant relocation amount of $40,000 for relocation of the CPA firm Michelle L. Brenner and Company, PC, and displaced business currently located in the Strip Center on Parcel 2 for construction and maintenance of the Southeast 4th Street Railroad Underpass Project. The federal law requires payment for relocation under the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, Uniform Act as amended. Item I, approve a relocation in the amount of $192,950 for the relocation of the Telison Cabinet Company Incorporated and displaced business currently located at 137 Southeast 4th Street for construction and maintenance of the Southeast 4th Street Railroad Underpass Project. The federal law requires payment for relocation under the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, Uniform Act as amended. Item J, accept a 10-foot temporary construction easement from API OKC Properties LLC at 701 North Gale and Drew Watkins at 801 North Gale Avenue for the Kelly Creek Sewer Project. Item K, accept a 5-foot temporary construction easement from D.R. Jones at 605 North Gale Avenue for the Kelly Creek Sewer Project. And item L, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020-2021 in the amount of $4,951,957.35. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Danielle Mackenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries, bring us to item three. Consider the final plat for Edgewater Section 3 located in the Northeast Quarter Section 30 of Township 10 North and Range 2 West, being south of Southeast 19th Street and west of Sunny Lane Road, application by R&amp;R Development LLC Rocky Clark. Planning Commission recommended approval, six to zero. Ward one.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. This property is located to the south of Southeast 19th Street. It's west of Sunny Lane Road. The property was rezoned to R1 in May of 2014. The applicant is now requesting a final plat for the third and final phase of the development. This includes 87 lots and two common areas on approximately 48 acres. That's a density of approximately 1.7 dwelling units per acre. The final plat includes 23 acres of common area being mostly floodway and drainage areas. Public water and sewer will be extended to serve the site from the Edgewater Edition Section 2. Access is available from Southeast 19th Street through the existing residential streets as plotted in the previous phases of Edgewater Edition. There is Southeast 24th Street is a street that provides a single-point access to the 74 lots being east of the Eastern Most Creek. The developer has agreed to place a street step to the property to the east in order to provide this area a secondary access point when that eastern property develops. During the development of the Edgewater Edition, it was determined that placing detention in this location along the North Fork River would be detrimental to downstream flooding. As a result, the developer did work with the city's consulting drainage engineer to install compensatory storage in the floodplain to ensure that there would be no impact on downstream properties. Due to the unique sighting within this watershed, no detention for the space of Edgewater will be required. The western portion of the site is located within the 100-year floodplain as identified by both FEMA and the 2016 master drainage study, and all development within the floodplain must follow FEMA regulations. The envisioned more 2040 plan calls for this location to be open space residential. Although the preliminary plat for the Edgewater Edition was approved prior to the adoption of the comprehensive plan, this application was reviewed to its general conformance for informational purposes only, and based on the significant open space within this addition, this application was deemed to be in conformance with the plan. Staff recommends approval of the final plat. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from anyone?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle Mackenzie?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Item passes. Item four, consider approval of a lot split at 2409 Regency Place, application by Charles Poppins.
Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council, this property is Zon C5 with a permissive use for automotive repair. This is a single building on one lot currently. The single building does have two lease spaces side by side. The applicant would like to split the lot down the middle, which would split the building down the middle, and separate each of the two lease spaces into, so that they can be sold independently of each other. The applicant has updated the party wall in the building to an appropriate firewall so that this lot split can occur and still comply with our building code regulations. The lot split does meet C5 requirements, and staff recommends approval of this lot split. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
What are the zonings around that?
I'm sorry?
What are the zonings around that building?
That entire Regency Place, it's a cul-de-sac that was all Zon C5 with a permissive use for auto repair. There's a lot of auto businesses in that area.
Is... How is that, I know on that, so that's the street coming off of Janeway leading into the Nottingham Square Apartments? Is that 24th Street?
24th Street, yes.
How is that street? Have you looked at it? I know it was in pretty rough shape.
I mean, it definitely needs some attention. I think we probably have worse streets in more than that street. It's a little bit of a different situation in that the street was plotted a long time ago, and it has some on-street parking that we wouldn't approve today, and it also has a very weird configuration when it comes up to Janeway. It's almost like it had a right turn-only lane. But businesses, the car repair customers can come in and out of that street, and I would think that at some point, the street would be scheduled for repairs.
Because do, there's a lot, there is a lot of parking on that.
On that street.
Do we, Melissa, have you ever gotten any, heard any complaints or?
I haven't, I haven't heard too many complaints, but there is a lot of, yeah, parking over there, but I don't know that we can.
There is a lot of parking. I will say that every time we get an occupancy permit here, we try to make sure that that lot is cleaned up.
Okay.
And by cleaned up, I mean that all of the derelict vehicles are taken off, just the miscellaneous scrap metals cleared off. When this was developed, the parking regulations were very loose, and so there's a lot of parking on a non-sealed surface, and I, there's really no good answer for that, except for whenever it comes to be redeveloped in the future.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Just need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle Mackenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries, sorry.
That's fine.
I got it. Item number five, let's receive annual report on the 2020 Storm Water Quality Program.
Thank you. The city's current five-year Phase 2 Small MS4 Permit, also known as the Storm Water Program Permit, did end on June 30 of 2020. DEQ issues these permits in five-year increments, so every five years, we are approved for the following five years. I've attached a memo that describes the program more fully in your packet. I'll just give a brief summary. We did have our five-year audit in November of 2020, so this was an audit that looked back the past five years to let us know if we are complying with the requirements of DEQ and EPA. Overall, the city did perform well. We had a lot of successes. If you look on page 158 of your packet, I provided a summary table, and it's very brief. I really just highlighted the accomplishments that we had, and I'll just highlight just a couple of those for you now. Over the past five years, we did collect over 50,000 gallons of hazardous household waste for recycling. That's things like paint, weed killer, stuff like that. We did inspect 166 pollution violations. That's when someone called into our code enforcement hotline and complained that there was a stormwater violation. We completed over 2,000 erosion control maintenance inspections, and those are inspections where we drive out to buildings under construction and make sure they have their erosion control installed and kept up. And we did remove 763 tons of siltation from creeks and ponds all over the city, and that is the past five years. We removed almost three tons of animal waste from city parks and the animal shelter, and about 200 tons of trash and debris from storm drain inlets. So we have been complying with our permit. The audit did suggest that we implement procedures, including a regular inspection program for our long-term BMPs, which would be things like detention ponds. And we should also develop an employee training program that would train all of our city employees to look for violations as they are already out in the field doing their regular job. So these are things that we'll be focusing on in the future. And speaking of the future, the DEQ is preparing the next five-year permit cycle. We have had a look at the draft permit that DEQ has provided. We aren't anticipating a lot of changes from this permit. The draft that we reviewed, it is very similar to the last five-year program. However, it does have a couple of significant changes that will have to change the way we're doing things here. The first is that they will be requiring cities over 50,000 in population to inspect industrial sites for stormwater pollution. Currently, that's something that DEQ does today, but they've decided to push this down to the local level for those cities over 50,000. So we are anticipating we'll have anywhere between 10 to 20 industrial sites that we'll have to inspect on a regular basis. The other big change is that the draft permit is suggesting, not suggesting, it's requiring, low-impact development techniques be brought into the city processes and procedures. So low-impact development techniques are using the natural environment to filter out stormwater pollutants. So they're generally lower in cost to install, but higher in cost to maintain. And these are things that we have to provide options for, and we've already started incorporating some of these techniques into our code updates that we're working on that we hope you'll be seeing soon. So once the permit is finalized, it's still in the draft phase, once the permit is finalized, which we are expecting any time now, the next five-year stormwater management plan and TMDL implementation plan must be submitted to DEQ within 90 days, so we don't have a lot of time to prepare these. The city staff has the capability to update the five-year stormwater management plan. However, the TMDL implementation plan has to do with the TMDL established for Lake Thunderbird. That plan is much more scientific in nature, and so we would need some assistance to prepare that plan, which would lead me to the next item on the agenda, which is requesting authorization to submit for RFQs for that plan. And moving forward for the next year until the next five-year plan, or five-year permit is finalized by DEQ, we have to continue on with our regular stormwater program. So the things that we're going to be doing for the next year until we do get the five-year permit is continuing to map our stormwater infrastructure. We will be collaborating with some regional organizations for stormwater, for public education and outreach, and we will be presenting some code updates for your consideration for drainage criteria, city standards and details, and other land development regulations that would codify these low-impact development techniques that DEQ is saying that we have to do. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. This is the brief update.
Only question I would have, do you suspect you'll need to hire an additional person once the, comes in place where we have to do the inspections?
Not at the moment. In fact, in the audience right now is Sarah Copeland. She's the new Assistant Planner, and we have reallocated some duties so that she is half-time doing administrative work for stormwater management, which allows our current stormwater manager to do more inspections.
Okay, great. Motion to receive the report.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle Mackenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries, bring us to item six. Authorize staff to solicit requests for qualifications for the Lake Thunderbird TMDL Compliance Plan.
Again, this was mentioned in my report that we will need to have some outside assistance with the TMDL compliance plan. Once the permit is issued by DEQ, we'll have three months to complete it, so we would like to go out for requests for qualifications now and get that person or firm secured, and then whenever the new permit is issued, we will begin working on the plan.
Do any of the existing groups that we're currently engaged with now have this capability?
Yes. Most engineering firms that deal with stormwater and drainage are able to do this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And I just have one quick question, and just you can be brief. Obviously, you're wanting to hire somebody to help with this. Do you anticipate it'll be, it's going to be expensive?
Well, I anticipate it being anywhere from $30,000 to maybe $50,000.
Well, whatever recommendations that they have for us to comply with.
I don't believe that it'll be any more expensive at this point than it has been in the past. At some point, that might tip over and change, but for now, I think going on cruise control is good.
Okay, great, thanks. We had a motion and a second, and call the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle Mackenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries, bring us to item seven. Consider approval of an amendment to the Teladoc Service Agreement effective January 1st, 2021, changing the cost for services from $4.25 per employee per month to $5.50 per employee per month.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, on July 6th, you had approved an amendment to our service agreement with Teladoc, the city's telemedicine provider, which extended that agreement through December 31st, 2020, and made the new effective date January 1st of 2021. With your approval of this new amendment to the services agreement, it will now cover a full calendar year and automatically renew on January 1st of each subsequent year. There is a slight increase in the cost this year, up from $4.25 per employee per month to $5.50 per employee per month. Staff recommends approval.
What's the overall annual impact cost wise?
It's hard to say. It can change from year to year because it's based on the number of employees who use it, so.
So it's not per employee that we have, it's per employee?
No, I'm sorry, it is, it's per employee that we have, yes.
Seventy-five cents a month per employee.
Talked really good.
What's the difference between this and the one that Baptist offers?
I'm sorry?
The one that Integris offers, they offer free service. What's the difference between this service and Integris service?
I don't know, but I'd be happy to look into it.
Just thought, you know, they advertise on television, if you need service, you can go to Integris, and you can do an online service, and it doesn't cost you anything except the regular doctors does it.
But their insurance would be, this probably depends on, it costs your insurance.
Yeah, I think so, probably.
Well, this does too.
Right.
Mayor and Council, total cost of the increase is about $3,600 for the year.
Thank you, sir. Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had the motion and a second. Any other questions? Call the vote, please.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle Mackenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries, bring us to item eight. Consider approval of a modification to the city's Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, modifying the sick leave buyback procedures.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, what this is here is a change to our Policy, Personnel Policy Procedures Manual, modifying the sick leave buyback. Currently, how we're doing that is if an employee reaches the 1,000, which is the limit, each paycheck, the, what they accrue during that paid period is they're paid at the next paid period. And I like to say that's automatic, but it is not automatic. There is somebody in payroll that has to catch each person and actually do it manually. Problem with that is sometimes she will miss one or two, and then another problem we have is we have some people that are coming up to the 1,000, well, that's not even on her radar, and they will be missed as well. So what we're doing here is, and I've also got the agreement of the unions, once we reach the 1,000, they will continue to accrue above the 1,000, but then when the sick leave buyback in May and December occur, it will be mandatory that they sell back down to the 1,000. It'll be automatic. So for a five, six-month period of time, they're going to accrue more than the 1,000, and then boom, they'll go back down to 1,000. They can still sell more than that back if they would like to, but they're going to go back to the 1,000. Rather than every paid period, they're going to go down to 1,000. It's going to be twice a year.
Any idea roughly how many employees we have that hit that threshold?
There isn't very many. The police have the most right now, and I would say roughly it's between 10 and 15, so it isn't a lot of employees in there.
Okay, are there any questions? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Danielle Mackenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries, bring us to item nine. Consider approval of a modification to the city's Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, adding a clear desk policy for employees that deal with confidential matters.
Mayor and Council, what this is here is a change to our Policy Procedures Manual, again, in regards to a clear desk policy. What that is, how this came about is David Thompson came to me in the IT Department, and there was a recommendation by our auditor in regards to cybersecurity in relation to the Americas Water Infrastructure Act. And part of the recommendations was that anybody, any employee that handles confidential information should have a clear desk policy. If I get up off my desk, I should have those papers stored, put away, not have items still on my monitor where somebody could walk in and see that. They recommended that we have a policy. There was not a policy in place, so I wrote this policy here.
Any questions? Somebody want to motion?
A motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle Mackenzie?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries, bring us to item 10. Consider Resolution Number 98121, adopting the schedule of fees and charges and repealing all prior inconsistent fees.
Mayor and Council and Vice Mayor, this is a change to our fee schedule. The only changes in this one, I'm going to try to do this once a year to keep up to date because it seems like if you get behind on it, then there's massive, a lot of changes. This time, the only change really is to the Aquatic Center. There are some changes in the rentals for the lap pool, the lazy river, the pool rental. The sports fees, like the basketball fees and volleyball fees, those were completely eliminated because really the Parks and Rec manager will set those fees depending on the number of teams that we have and the amount of, basically the number of teams that we have would really dictate the cost per team. Those are the only changes to the fee schedule at this time.
And we set those just as a break-even cost, pay for refs and that type of stuff?
That is my understanding, yes. Some of this was a little bit under, if you look at it, the, well, for example, let me give an example. The lazy river went from 160 an hour to rent that to 250. Reason for that is, is evidently there were supply spots, we had to have more lifeguards out there at the time, so this would, we didn't have more lifeguards, so the price has gone up. And the pavilion rentals, that's for me, that's exactly.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle Mackenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries, bring us to number 11. Consider adopting Resolution Number 98221... Consider adopting Resolution Number nine-eight-two-two-one, authorizing the city attorney to institute eminent domain proceedings for condemnation and declaring the necessity for acquiring properties for roadway and drainage improvements for the southeast Fourth Street Railroad Underpass Improvement Project Number three-three-zero-two-five-zero-four.
Mayor and Council, Exhibit A to Resolution nine-eighty-two identifies six parcels and properties where the city must acquire either right-of-way easements, utility easements, or even the whole tract of land for the southeast Fourth Street Railroad Underpass Improvements. The adoption of Resolution Number nine-eighty-two would authorize acquiring these tracts of land or right-of-ways and easements through the condemnation process in District Court. Negotiations on the parcels contained in Exhibit A have been unsuccessful to date. Even though we're asking you to approve the resolution for condemnation, we will continue to negotiate with these property owners to see if we can come to a successful negotiation for these properties. We recommend that you approve Resolution nine-eighty-two.
So in the fact that we go to District Court and come to some kind of agreement, will that come back for the council? How does that work?
Well, I would think that, I guess we could, I mean, if we come to a negotiation, then we'll bring, you know, prior to it actually being approved in District Court, what we would do, by approved, basically the process is they hire three commissioners, if you will, and they establish a price, and then the money is put in through that process, and then they have a trial to determine what the actual amount is. But we would bring it back to council if we had negotiated a price that both parties agreed to. We would bring it back to council, and you would agree to it.
And you expect this to be contested in court?
I expect three or four of these possibly, yes, to be contested in court.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second, and call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Item passes. Bring us to item number twelve. Consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a Toro five-nine-zero-zero-grab master sixteen-foot battery mower in the amount of a hundred and five thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars, and a Vint Trac forty-five-hundred-wide tractor slope mower in the amount of thirty-five thousand nine hundred six dollars from Professional Turf Products using state contract number SW one-nine-zero.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, by purchasing these pieces of equipment, it will save man-hours and complete projects faster. We're using older equipment now, and it takes a lot of time to repair those pieces of equipment, and men are down not out mowing because we don't have proper equipment.
Is this a budgeted item?
Yes, it's a budgeted item.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All right, okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries. Thank you. Item thirteen is consider authorizing staff to solicit competitive bids for updated fitness equipment for the station.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, again, the equipment at the station and the fitness center is the same as when the facility opened. We are hoping to get updated equipment that will also work with the Cox digital information so that the TVs will work and different parts of the equipment will work. The useful life for the equipment that's there is used up, so we're just requesting the permission to solicit competitive bids.
How do we plan on replacing the equipment? Are we going to do it in batches, completely?
I'm sorry.
Are we going to do it in waves? Are we going to replace a certain percentage of equipment every year, or do we plan to just replace all the equipment right now?
What we would replace is just the elliptical, the treadmills, and things like that.
Just as they break?
None of the lift equipment or anything that is not used as much.
Is it as they break, or are we replacing all of the?
No, we're replacing it all.
Okay. What are we doing with the old ones?
It's, we're working on an agreement to resell the used equipment.
Awesome. Make a motion, we approve.
So, and I'm curious, when you say resell, will we trade it in or just declare the surplus?
It just depends on who we can get the best price from.
Okay.
Yes, it's, we can trade it in to the company.
Okay. All right, correct. Thank you. Do we have this money budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries, thank you. Item fourteen is consider approval of a revised calculation related to the sales tax rebate for BlueSeal.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, as you know, the city entered into a rebate agreement with BlueSeal in which they must reach nine-point-five million in sales each year in order to receive the maximum rebate each year. Due to pandemic, most businesses saw reduced or no sales during the April and May sales tax reporting period. Because of these extraordinary circumstances, we would like to ask council to allow us to make a one-time adjustment to the calculation used to determine if they have met the required nine-point-five million in sales. We are proposing using the average of the lowest six months of sales tax earnings during the calculation period and using this number for their April and May sales. We believe this calculation produces a conservative number, and this adjustment would only be used for this first rebate period. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
How much were they shorting sales?
I'm sorry?
What were they shorting sales?
Um.
Okay. So what, how much is that when we give them the rebate? What percentage of the five hundred thousand would we end up giving them?
Well, the rebate would be recalculated to see if they would hit that max nine-point-five million. Right now, they don't because of those two low ones.
Can you remind me what the percentage is that we give them as the rebate, though? I just can't remember.
It's not a percentage, it's a flat rate. It's a percentage, it's a one-point-five percent percentage of sales.
Okay, so.
To the maximum.
So we're just talking about one-point-five percent of five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
So seventy-five hundred dollars is what we're talking about? If it's one-point-five percent of seventy-five hundred thousand?
Add it to the other nine million.
Right, okay. Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries. We will now recess the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item fifteen is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held December twenty-first, 2020. Item B, ratify action of City Council regarding approval of an amendment to the Teladoc Service Agreement effective January first, 2021. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures FY twenty-twenty dash twenty-twenty-one in the amount of eight-hundred-forty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Motion to approve.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, considered passes. Bring us item sixteen. Consider approval of amendment to the Health Care Highway Service Agreement effective January first, 2021, changing the fee for services performed outside of Oklahoma from zero dollars and zero cents to twenty-five percent savings.
I'm going to repeat that. Healthcare highways is the health provider network that the city uses within Oklahoma. Services outside of Oklahoma are provided by a partner service, Private Healthcare Systems or PHCS. This amendment includes a slight change to the fees that we will be charged for these out-of-state services, changing from zero dollars to twenty-five percent of savings for using PHCS. Please know we have very few members who ever receive services outside of Oklahoma, and usually that is only in emergency. So staff recommends approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries, passes. We'll bring, recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item seventeen is the consent docket. A, accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held December twenty-first, 2020. And item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty-twenty dash twenty-twenty-one in the amount of six-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Motion to approve.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. And that's, that's no problem.
Same, started twenty-eight years, so it's like a long time.
We will now recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting and just to up the record, but that everybody is still here. Item number eighteen is new business. Is there anybody, citizens forum items on the agenda, is there anyone here that'd like to speak to the council? Item B is items from City Council trustees.
I noticed that, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say they've done a good job picking up the limbs, and over by where they're doing the burner on thirty, South Thirty-Fourth Street, I think we're going to have to redo the road over there from east of the railroad tracks to probably Broadway, because those big trucks have eaten it up. And this has got a lot of potholes. That's it.
I was just, I was actually going to talk about that, too. I know Jerry said that we were planning on starting the second round on Monday, and because of the snow, it was pushed off to Wednesday. Had a lot of calls still about that. I know we did a great job getting it, taking care of it the first time, and we've had snow and rain on this. And then my, I did have another question for Elizabeth. I get a play-by-play on the house on Briarwood, or I think that's where it is. And I heard the tape went up, and then I heard that maybe residents might have taken it back down. Do we have an idea of when the demolition will take place?
Sorry, I don't have great news about that.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. We contacted with M&amp;M wrecking. They had promised us they would be out tomorrow morning at seven-thirty to begin demolition. And we got a call from them late this afternoon saying that it would now be Wednesday.
Okay.
So we are, we're preparing for Wednesday, but honestly, I will be placing another item on the agenda for next council meeting to go with the next lowest bid, just in case M&amp;M does not perform.
Okay.
So is this still weather-related that they're balking on, or?
Um, it's, I think it's weather, and I think that they're behind possibly on some other projects they had going on. I mean, we're in the queue, and it's just, they can, but the next low bill will be Midwest wrecking, and they still are going to honor their prices.
Okay, good news.
Thank you. Brooks, I just have one question or comment. I know, I've noticed though, the shopping center, I don't know the name of it, Overwear, the garage and. Shops at Moore? Yes. That that road is starting to deteriorate again. I know we, I don't know, a couple of years ago, the city went in, and have we, have you been able to do any research? I know that there's a lot of different, I guess, businesses who owned a piece of that,